Are you recording? Yeah. I've got, um, well, I've got one more minute and then I don't see Kevin on there.
I'll just send him a text or ask if you're still planning on joining.
If Kevin doesn't join, does it still take open for Zoom?
Mm-hmm.
Zoom's already posted it.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. I'll turn this thing around. I've got five. Is that good, Jesse? You telling me on there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I've got five o'clock. Called the meeting to order today Tuesday, February 22nd, 2020, 2/22/22. Role call, Selectman Howie Goodwin, Mackenzie Jewett, and myself, Jamie Thurlow, Town Clerk Katie Dandran, and Town Manager Jesse Dunbar. And I know Eric had called a week ago probably and said that he couldn't make this meeting, so.
I'll make a motion to excuse Eric Eaton from tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Eric Eaton from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? And also Kevin is not here tonight. Well, he was, Jesse, you can explain that, I guess.
Kevin requested to join by Zoom. That's why I have the options on here.
Okay.
I haven't seen him join yet. And he hasn't gotten back to me yet.
Okay, so we'll just hold off on that right now.
Yeah.
All right. I want his first. Adoption of agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to change on the agenda? Next, we have a public hearing about a liquor license and special amusement permit. Want to open the public hearing up right now. All right, we have a application from for Oktoberfest to be held down here at McCackern's old building. Is there anybody that would like to speak on behalf of them?
Hi, I'm Bonnie Lewis, and I'm Treasurer of Chamber of Commerce, and we're hoping to move the location of the October Fest this year, you know, the Archie's location. And we've talked to Jesse a little bit about it, and we've been closed the application. We've gone over the square footage, the top of the fire chief, P. Higgins, and we think it's a really viable option. You know, we're not sure about the parking. I know we had a little discussion about that. If we could have parking on the Slatter Road and then possible parking locations at Tremont School, maybe here, and then we plan on using the bus. I think it's Harbor House buses that we plan on using, hiring a driver, and picking up at certain locations.
Yep.
Yes, and we would advertise all of that, maybe have a location, a pickup location at Smuggler's Den, the school, possibly here. I'm not sure. Did we ever figure out how many parking spots we had at the school?
Not yet, and I think it's about 60.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So how do you want me to address that? Okay. All right, so we, yeah, the only thing that I can see with this is obviously is parking. Like, everybody knows it gets pulled up there by smugglers.
Right.
I would want to make sure that we had, you know, not, there's not much road there to park on a shoulder, so.
Right.
If we, you know, if you could set up parking definitely, like, at the school, that's pretty walkable, too.
Yeah.
To the school, and then the town office, if they ran a shuttle or whatever, a van or something back and forth, just so that people weren't parking on side of the road. And then you could even park, well, yeah, there's plenty of places in town. I was gonna say other town lots you could use, too.
Right, and we do have signage that we will put up as well.
Okay.
And we're gonna, I think we're gonna try to hire two police officers, is she, I think we might get four. Okay.
Yep. Yep.
I'm all for it, as long as it's not parking on the main road.
Yep.
I mean, for all the other parking lots wherever you can or where you, but as long as it's not on that main drag right in front and.
Yep. Yeah, that's my only concern with it. I trust you guys have got it under control other than, you know, just that, just to make sure the parking is not, not an issue, and that way, if it does work out well, then it will be, you know, maybe a spot for another year, too.
Right, definitely.
Yep.
It's a good spot.
Yep. Yeah, no, it's a nice spot for it. I mean, right on the water like that, it's a beautiful spot, and they have the buildings to do it, so.
Right.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments? All right.
There's two members of the public online, along with Kevin, has now joined. If you want to ask if any of them have a comment on.
Okay, can you ask, or am I, I didn't know if it's, okay.
It's on.
Does anybody on, online have a comment or questions before I close the public hearing? Nothing?
Nobody's on the hearing. Kevin, can you hear us fine?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
All right, I will close the public hearing then. All right, so what do you need from us?
Do you want our motion now, after the public hearing?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Southwest Harbor Tremont Chamber of Commerce for Katie's Oktoberfest located at 90 Tremont Road for state special tasting event liquor license and a special amusement permit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application of Southwest Harbor Tremont Chamber of Commerce where Katie is Oktoberfest located at 90 Tremont Road for a special, state special tasting event liquor license and special amusement permit. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? And then I have to ask Kevin.
Yes.
It's a little funny doing it this way. I'm trying my best. All right. We got that far. Approval of minutes. We have the minutes from Monday, February 7.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 7, 2022.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from Monday, February 7, 2022. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Kevin?
Yes.
Yes. All right, approval of warrants. We have warrant 79 for $10,106.34, warrant 80 for $7,150.31, 81 for $61,148.96, 82 for[506.82][506.85]$10,371.67, 83 for $22,065.88.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants 79 through 83.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrant 79 through 83. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Kevin?
Yes.
All right, financial reports. That would be you, Jesse.
All right, that would be me. So these reports are as of January 31st, which is 59% of the way through the fiscal year. In January, we collected another $73,000 in property taxes, bringing total collections for the year up to 95% of the budget, continuing to outpace all recent years. They also collected just over $42,000 in motor vehicle excess tax, resulting in total collections of 63% of what was budgeted. This is behind pace from last year but ahead of pace for all the other recent years, on record. License, under licenses and fees, plumbing and building permit fees both increased again in January. Building permit's increased by $975, which now brings this line item to 108% of the anticipated amount. Under expenses, a couple of highlights. The administration cost center is running at 50% of the budget, budgeted amount, which is under budget for this point in the year. We had additional expenses of $2,100 in the attorney's fees line. You'll see the increase of the $23,058 that you encumbered from FY '21 to this budget line, which now makes the expenses in this line 55% of the budgeted amount. In public works, we're finally seeing more expenses under the winter roads. We had $3,500 in part-time flat truck driver wages and $1,693 in road salt. Also in repairs in public works, you'll see an additional expense of $1623 for the starter on truck one, and a $681 repair to the exhaust on the case machine. The supplies line, there was an expense of $897 to restock the supply of nuts and bolts and washers that's been needed for quite a while. In the road improvement reserve program, you'll see the increase of $31,352 that you encumbered from FY '21. And in the general ledger, you'll see we received $10,752 in revenue sharing from the state in December, bringing total receipts for FY '22 to $76,734, or 90% of what was budgeted for the whole year, meaning that we continue to expect to significantly exceed anticipated revenue. Otherwise, I have no significant changes to the general reserve accounts in January.
All right, thank you, Jesse. I just had one question on the case. Was that something that just got damaged, or was it, I'm just, that's quite a new machine, so I was just curious.
No, it was not damaged. I'd have to check with Troy for the exact issue.
Yeah, it doesn't, I just didn't know if it was something that happened or whether it was like a failure, because I know that's only, what, two years, two years old now, maybe?
Yeah, it's just, I believe the warranty expired in July or August. We'll just not extend it.
That's how it works, yeah. Yep, okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the July 2021 through January 2022 financial reports.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the July 2021 through January 2022 financial reports. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Kevin?
He did.
Oh, he did? Okay, couldn't hear.
Yes.
Can I turn this thing around so I can see? Or is that not, I guess that's fine. As long as you tell me, as long as I know that he. All right, now we're on to regular business. We have the fiscal year 21 audit, and we have Mr. James Wardman here to present.
Okay. Well, here we are again this year. To review your audited financial statements that you all have, these reports, this is probably about the same as it was last year. The report itself is about 70 pages long. I think they'll grow again some next year. We have a new statement coming into effect that we have to comply with related to leases. So just something to keep in mind as you go through this year. Anytime you get your hands on a lease, whether you're on the leasing side or the lease or side, make a copy of it for the auditors when they come, so. We've got some more disclosures on this, so, you know, these, these changes are just, and I'll touch upon it as we go through, you know, just tons and tons of disclosure here that we're required to put in, and I'll kind of hit upon the highlights as we go through. But going into the report itself, our opinion letter is on pages one and two, where we express our opinion on your financial statements that follow, the note disclosures that are in the middle here, and if you, if you're in a situation with some federal grant compliance that we had to report on, that will be here as well, but that doesn't come into play for you for this particular year. You know, may come into effect next year with the amount COVID-related money that there is going out to the towns, into the schools, so it's adding a lot to this reporting. But your opinion letter on pages one and two is, again, a non-modified or clean opinion on your financial statements for this past fiscal year.
Thank you.
Pages three through seven, three through seven, is a management's discussion and analysis, which is kind of a narrative summary of the financial highlights for the year. And it's kind of takes the whole year's activity and pulls it into a brief summary. But I like to talk about the middle of page number three, a fund highlights paragraph on that page, and it talks about your total fund balances for this year that just ended, $3,483,232. And of that amount, $1,034,573, which is your general unassigned fund balance. Otherwise, you may refer to it as surplus when you're reviewing things internally. That unassigned fund balance represents approximately 15.9% of your expenses for the year. Now, the handout that I gave to you, we've got you folks for the past three years here, and we've got some other towns here as well, our harbor, Trenton, Castine, to hear as well, and, you know, and you'll see on each of these towns for the past three fiscal years, unassigned fund balance has been growing, and in particular, this, this last year that just ended, these are all June 30 year ends, you know, you can see pretty significant increases in surplus balances for this year. It's just been a strong financial year on both the revenue and expense end of things overall for towns. As you may get in your reporting from Jesse, you know, talking about excise tax revenues, for example, have been very strong, tax collections have been very strong, so that allows for favorable reporting on that end, and then expenses, you know, expenses have been well under control, and I'll touch upon some statements as we get a little further, that we can see that in some more detail. Financial statements begin on page eight. I'll talk briefly about page eight, pages 89 together. These are, these are called the government-wide financial statements, exhibits A and exhibit B. And these are your financial statements that are supposed to be portrayed in a similar fashion to the for-profit sector. So capital assets are included here, not just, not just your current liquid assets, but, you know, larger pieces of town equipment, town buildings, town-owned roads, parking lots, sidewalks, anything of that nature are included as assets of the town. And, and then the debt that goes along with them would be included here as well. And then in the middle of page number eight, kind of the lower, the lower third there, the lower, two-thirds, I should say, in the liability section, we've got some of this reporting that's, that's coming in now related to post-employment benefits, like defined benefit retirement plans and retiree life and health benefits. And this is where the actuaries get involved and they value these plans, the funds available to, to pay these retiree benefits, and compare that to what the expected payout is over the lifetime of retirees, and these shortages are computed, and this is where all of this, you know, this, this is probably about half of the report here is related to these disclosures that we've had to put in, in the past few years. So we'll, we'll continue to see this on these government-wide statements. So when you get to page number 10, and through the remainder of the financial statements themselves, now we're on the same accounting basis as you prepare your budget and operate on a day-to-day basis. You know, the fixed assets, the capital assets, I should say, and the debt related to them is pulled out of the statements. So if you look at the balance sheet on page number 10, now we're looking at, we look at the assets in the top third of the page, these are all current assets that are available and relatively liquid for the town to pay its obligations. You know, we don't have land in there, town-owned roads and stuff like that, because that, those assets can't be used to, to pay bills for the town, you know, so that's why they're not included here. And this is kind of the traditional reporting that we had for years and years. But again, from page 10 through the remainder of the financial statements, then we're on the same basis that you put your budget together and operate internally. So let's see. Notes to the financial statements begin on page number 13. They go all the way through page 40. We've got like 28 pages of notes to financial statements here, which get into all of the towns, you know, the accounting policies used to, to prepare the financial statements. On pages 19, page 19's kind of a nice summary of all the town's various fund balances. So if you're wondering, okay, what do we have in a particular fund, you could probably flip here and pick that up pretty quickly. Just flipping through these notes. Begin on page 24, and continuing on page 25, and the notes summarizes what the town has for debt, and not only like long-term notes, but also any capital leases for, you know, for any pieces of equipment the town might own, and this includes the school department, too, that is owned by you at the end of the lease term. But again, we're going to see some more disclosures come in in this year that we're in right now, related to any types of lease that you have, whether you're the leasing or the lease or. So there'll be some, some additional pages added in this, in this year coming. Beginning on page 26, and the notes going through to page number 30, are all the disclosures related to the defined, defined benefit employee pension plan, which is for the school department employees, the teachers, the retirement plan for them. And then on page 30, and continuing all the way through 40, are disclosures that were required to include related to life and health insurance benefits for both school and town employees. You can see how many pages have been added as a result of these disclosures. We get to page number 41, and we're at one of the more useful financial statements that you have. This is your budget versus actual operating statement for your general operating fund, where you can look at your results of your operations for this past year. And you can see we've got an original budget, a final budget, and just glancing at them, I can see they, they're equal, so you didn't make any budget modifications during the year. For example, you didn't have a, a special town meeting to, to, you know, raise additional funds or take additional funds for surplus or anything like that. But if you trace your, your budget columns down to the bottom line, where the double underline is, this was the plan, was to reduce surplus by $35,000 for the year. When you get into the actual column, the third column over, we chase it down to the same line, and it shows $150,291. So you actually had favorable operating results of $150,291. The budget was to reduce surplus by 35. You actually increased it by $150,000. So overall, you had a favorable variance budget versus actual of $185,000 for the, for the past operating year. So that's a good financial statement to look at, one of the more useful statements in the report. And every page that we've gone over so far is, is required to be here. You know, this isn't stuff that we're, that we're putting in. It's all required by the governmental accounting standards board, that this all be included not only here, but in the order that they fall. The next 10 pages is more disclosure related to pensions and other post-employment benefits. And then we pick up on page 52, and we've got, on page number 52, we've got your operating revenue budget versus actual. It's basically taking those figures that were over on the last statement we looked at and breaking them out into more detail. So over on that first statement we looked at, we had taxes. So now we can look and say, okay, we've got taxes broken into property tax revenues, excise taxes, and then the, the interest and fees related to taxes, and so forth, going down through, you know, some broad categories and breaking them into more detail for you. On page 53 and 54, we're taking the, the expenses side, I'm sorry, all the way to 55, on the expense side of things, and breaking those items into more detail for you, too, so you can see more detail what your operating results were there. And then on page 56 is kind of where it's all pulled together to show your change in surplus. Starting the year at $884,282, ending with $1,034,573, or that net change that we talked about of $150,000. So that's all kind of how this pulls together. The statements that follow, I didn't make any notes to talk about here, but this is some of the other, the other funds that the town has other than the general operating fund, and, you know, breaks those other funds into more detail, your general reserves, things of that nature. And so really, the way we write these financial statements is we, we do these back exhibits first, and then they all move to the front, kind of write them in reverse order. But that basically summarizes everything that I have for you in your, in your statements. In the handout I gave to you, one final thing I had on the second page was just a little analysis of debt, comparing you to the same, those same three municipalities that we were looking at from a surplus standpoint. And, you know, the, the town, you've got roughly $360,000 of debt as of June 30th, which is .07% of your state valuation, you know, well, well below what the statutes allow you to have. And even, you know, of the four comparisons I gave you, Castine, you could see in terms of a percentage of state valuation is, is much higher than the others, but they're still at 2.6% of their state valuation, you know, much, well, well below what the state allows you to have. You can go, you know, as absolutely high as 15% of your state valuation when you factor in all the different things that you're allowed to have. So that's everything I have for you. If you have any questions for me, if you want me to answer them, or have Kelly get back to you, I hope she's usually with me, but couldn't make it tonight, so. Send me, send me down to give you hope you're.
Send the boss down, yeah. No, thank you, that looks great.
Very strong financial year for you, and, you know, and that's basically what we've, what we've seen over this past year or two. A lot, you know, a lot of strong revenues and expenses, well, well under control, you know, some things that, maybe some projects that are being postponed, or, or just, you know, just control, good control of expenses, staying within budget. So we've really seen, you know, decent growth in the, in the surplus balances for, for the towns that we audit, which is obviously what you want to see.
No, I think we need to make sure to thank former town manager Chris and Jesse both for doing such a good job, because we've been getting projects done as well. And I know when I first started this about six years ago, that was only a couple percent. You know, it was very low. It was too, I, I remember when you came in, I think it was two, you know, right around 2%, and to have it now almost 16%, that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah, you can see the outlier there, Castine, they're at 101%, so.
Yeah.
They're, you know, they could, they could take a year of taxation off.
Yeah.
People do that, but.
No, that looks great, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept and file the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, and to thank Mr. Wardman for attending this evening.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the July 2021 through January 2022 financial reports, and to thank Mr. Wardman for attending this evening's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Kevin? Okay, hang on just a second.
Sorry about that, that's the other.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wardman.
Okay, thank you all.
Yeah, yes, you too, thank you. No, I can't believe the change in that every year, that's awesome. No, I can't believe the change in that every year, that's awesome. All right, next we have the Southwest Tremont Ambulance Service. I know they had a request to come speak, I believe someone is here.
Hi.
Hello, how are you?
Good, thank you. I'm Andy Klein, my colleague Dave Ashward. When we were here in December to meet with you and request funding for the next year. One of the topics for discussion was about our coverage. And, and we thought it was important to share some more detailed information with you about that. If you've had a chance to look at this, which I think Jesse included in your packet. You'll see that we were able in two thousand twenty-one to cover almost a hundred percent of the shifts during the entire year for drivers. And more than ninety-five percent of the shifts for EMTs. We're still short in some areas and we're working hard to make that a hundred percent. But you can see that the record is pretty strong. And I wanted to, in addition to, you know, crew members just stepping up and filling those slots. I also want to acknowledge the extra work done by our service chief Andrew Brayley and our former crew chief Dwayne Connet. Working hard to fill those, those shifts. I think as select board members, you're far more likely to hear from citizens about a time when we didn't respond. Than you are about the hundreds of times we did respond. And we just wanted you to know that those times are the exception rather than the rule. But that said, if you receive concerns or complaints or comments, we always are eager to hear from you. Anything, any kind of communication between the town and us that helps us do our job better and serve the community better is a positive thing. So please don't ever hesitate to reach out to us. Jesse has my contact information and Dave's, I think. And, you know, we're, we're eager to hear from you anytime. I mean, of course, we'd like to hear good stuff too, but if you have complaints or concerns, by all means, do let us know. On the other sheet that Jesse included, I'll just mention a couple of things. We did, I think I might have mentioned this before, but I'll, I'll say it again. Two young women from Tremont are currently taking their EMT training. And we became aware that they might be in need of some financial assistance. So we've reached out to them with an offer that if they finish their training and come to work for us. And if they work for us for six months, taking the appropriate number of shifts, we will pay back fifty percent of what they paid for their training. And if they work for us for a year, we'll pay the other fifty percent, a hundred percent of the, I believe it's a thousand dollars that they had to put out to take that course. So we, we want young people to join the, the ranks of EMTs. You know, there's a shortage throughout all of Maine. And so if young people want to do that, we want to encourage it and help when we can. Another point to highlight is during this past year, we switched from the so-called line of sight radio frequency that the Southwest Harbor Public Works has to the repeater-supported frequency with a big antenna. That allows us to have much better communication between the ambulances and our headquarters. So for instance, before, if an ambulance was responding in seal code or taking a patient to Bar Harbor on our radios, they couldn't reach headquarters and report in. But now we can from just, I mean, if there was even a hill in the way, you, you wouldn't be able to get through. But now this is a much better system and it helps us to do our job better. And I, I'm saying our job, I'm just on the board, I don't, I don't know one end of the ambulance from the other. But our job is to support those folks. We've just last night at our board meeting approved the hiring of Andrew Brayley as our service director. It's the first time we've had an ambulance, a salary full-time position. Before this, everybody's been per diem and then certain officers get a little stipend for their extra work. But we're gonna, we're gonna take advantage of Andrew's enthusiasm and expertise and I think he's gonna do a great job for us. Another decision we've made finalized last night. We're gonna move our investment savings from a company called Royal Alliance with a guy that we rarely see or talk to down in Boston. And we're gonna move to Bar Harbor Bank and Trust, where their trust department has a lot of experience with working with nonprofits. And an excellent record as well as their investment department that can guide us to a proper balance between stocks and bonds and so forth. And we think we're gonna pay less for the service because being a nonprofit, they give us a, a good deal. And lastly, we have finalized the purchase plan of a new ambulance to replace our aging number two ambulance. We made the down payment just last week and the construction of that vehicle is, is starting. It's gonna take a while, so we won't have it right away and we'll probably have some repair bills to pay as we limp along with the older ambulance. But we've made that move. And all of these things that I'm describing are first steps toward a larger effort that we're gonna start next Saturday. We're gonna meet as a board with Andrew and others to do two Saturday sessions of strategic planning. To try and look at ourselves, see what we think we're doing well, what we can do better and set a course for the future. Instead of just, oh, let's keep doing what we're doing. And we hope that'll help us serve the town of Tremont and the town of Southwest Harbors to the best of our ability. Happy to take any questions.
I think that sounds great.
Yeah, that's good, yeah.
And if there's anything that you guys need of us as well, then feel free to reach out. And I know there are a lot of citizens that have said before that they had some concern with the ambulance being moved, you know, to Southwest. And anything they could do to help, you know, I think there's a lot of citizens who are willing to help, so.
Okay, well, that's great. Yeah, right now our number two ambulance is housed at the firehouse in Southwest. At the time that move was necessitated by the Tremont Fire Department not having room for us. I don't know if that situation has changed, but we are in communication with Keith. And trying to work towards strong cooperation between our service and both fire departments.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Next we have the Reed Store Parking Lot Permit Application. Jesse, do you want to explain what you have here?
Sure, yep, so there's a draft in your packet of the parking permit application for the Reed Parking Lot. You had discussed at one of your meetings last, end of last year. So looking at charging any of your parking fee for that. So I drafted up this version of a permit application just to get your thoughts on if that's essentially what you were thinking. And if so, I'll proceed with looking at making amendments of the parking ordinance and bring that back to you as well. You can see on the bottom, I've specified you would discuss fifty dollars for a resident, a hundred dollars for a non-resident. It runs May first through October thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two, so it'd be a yearly document we update. Right now we're planning, we've, I've set it up that they would get a permit sticker similar to the one Justin uses for the harbor. It would be affixed to the window. And I plan to have a discussion with the sheriff's office about monitoring the lot as part of our contract with the parking enforcement.
Kevin, do you have this in front of you?
Yes, I do, it looks good to me.
Okay, I knew that we had talked about dollar values and stuff on there before, but this looks really reasonable to me. So, yeah, I think that fifty dollars for a whole year to park there is, is more than reasonable. And hopefully it just takes care of the maintenance of the lot and, and that's, that'd be great.
Yep, yep.
Howdy, all good? Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the Reed Parking Lot Permit Application as drafted to twenty-two twenty-two.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Reed's Parking Lot Permit Application. And drafted from May first, two thousand twenty-two to October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Is there any discussion? We should call it the Reed Store, you know. But anyway, all those in favor?
It needs a new name.
Yeah. Kevin? All right, now we have the town manager's report.
All right. So major emphasis in the last two weeks has been the FY twenty-three budget work. I have had my monthly check-in with code enforcement officer. Worked on salt orders and dealt with some shortages from Morton. But we did not run out of salt and we were able to get delivery before we did, so that's good. Working on some more deliveries now. The state's having a large problem with Morton, with all the towns it's contracted with. I expect it'll probably come up when they do the bidding next year. And I expect there'll probably be a change in supplier due to the number of issues they've had this year. I worked on planning board meeting preparation and attended planning board meeting, two of them, I believe, since your last meeting. Did some work for the League of Towns, worked on a computer issue with the code enforcement computer with the computer technician. Received the FY twenty-one audit, finalized the sustainability committee bylaws that you approved at your last meeting. Completed the general assistance annual questionnaire from the state. Worked on board of appeals packet prep and attended the board of appeals meeting. I had a telephone call with Misha at Maine Coast Area Trust with an update on the Fishway Project. Made amendments to the land use ordinance as requested by the planning board. Attended a sustainability Zoom workshop with the Sustainability Committee on the Community Resilience Partnership Grant. I attended a general assistance training on Zoom, worked on the financial reports and prepared the harbor committee financial reports. The office staff, the clerk was busy finishing the advertisement for the tax-acquired property sale. Liquor license application advertisements, town meeting warrant draft and annual town report draft. The bookkeeper finished the annual workers' comp audit. And Public Works was busy with snowpiling, treating roads, changing the plow steel. Cleaning the garage, dealing with the two loads of salt that were delivered and the sand delivery. Washing and maintenance of the trucks and tree cleanup on Dixpoint Road and Tremont Road. Harbor Master, Harbor Master is busy salting floats, working on his annual report letter. Helping Public Works with plow steel and welding new pins on the two bigger plow trucks. Plowing and sanding and doing some repairs to the truck three sander. He worked with Main DOT about fixing the ferry terminal ramp. He met with the proff about moving their barge up in the harbor. Prepared the harbor committee packets, installed a new light on the bobcat, replaced door handles on the town garage. Worked on mooring wait lists and helped clean up the blowdown on Dixpoint Road. And over the next few weeks, I will be working on the FY twenty-three budget and my annual report letters.
Okay, thank you, Jess. Did that plow ever come in for that bobcat yet or not?
Not yet.
Another thing that's held up like COVID. All right, suggestions for next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-two at five P M. at the town office.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting from Monday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-two, five P M. at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Kevin? Next we have an executive session titled Personnel Matters.
I'll make a motion to find that the public discussion of these personnel matters could be reasonably expected to cause damage to the employee's reputation and/or to violate the employee's privacy rights and therefore to go into executive session to discuss the employment, appointment, assignment, duties, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, disciplining, resignation and/or dismissal of an individual or group of public officials, appointees or employees as permitted by one M R S A four oh five point six point A.
Sorry, Mackenzie.
Harder than math.
Been moved and seconded to go into executive section as read by Mackenzie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Kevin?
Yes.
All right. Oh, you already ended it, I thought I had to.
Do you have any dealings with Indian Town Marina down there? Yeah, they're, they're interesting.
Really?
Yeah. I will never do business with them.
Are we rolling?
Yeah, I just want to wiggle and turn zoom back on.
Okay. All right. Okay, all right, we are now out of executive session. You'd like to have a motion?
I make a motion to have Jesse Dunbar assist with planning board meetings and any digital Zoom-type formats. Assisting the code enforcement officer and being compensated at forty-two dollars an hour for that additional time.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize, or to have town manager Jesse Dunbar assist the planning board. Assist CEO with planning board matters with a compensation rate of forty-two dollars an hour. Does that sound?
Yeah, roughly, yeah.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion adjourned. All those in favor? All right.
Yeah, it's going down there.
Really?